Anyone else? Bees zoom.
Okay, so this, I don't know how the heck this happened.
I thought it was athletes.
Yeah.
Hey Debbie, someone here is?
Yeah.
Oh, is that the talking part?
Hello. I mean, that's also went back and we're not doing it.
Yeah. What, what did I hear?
What else?
I don't think.
Like I said, someone definitely can sit there, just, you know, mind.
So good then.
Well, we will just have Lisa said she isn't coming, but Reid and.
That was my question.
I don't know. He was supposed to come to this one, but then he has to come to this one. It says Mr. Ryan.
Should, yeah, there's Ryan.
Did he sign out?
Sounds good. I'd rather have him deal with it first.
We don't want to claim we were here.
Cause he's on two.
We don't want to claim we were here.
I don't. Assholes like man. I really don't.
Yeah.
He didn't really. But I.
Okay.
Sounds like Debbie's on.
Okay, is he ready? Is he calling?
I'm sure it's like, I think Jamie printed off the old.
Oh, yes. Yes.
It's all updated in the packet and stuff.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Fair, Ryan is sitting there and he can't be seen.
He's got it.
Who's that?
He can't be seen, that's what I always said, cause he can't be seen on the Zoom. I know.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start our work meeting. Lisa said that she would be late. I assume Reid's coming. He didn't tell me that he wasn't. So this is the work meeting for the Hooper City Council, February sixth, twenty twenty five. Want to welcome everyone that's either here or watching us online. And Debbie is at home doing it on Zoom, so we want to, we're happy to have you here with us, Debbie as well. Okay, so we have quite a few things I feel like to discuss, so let's just go ahead and get started. I thought we could just go through just the, I don't know if you just want to do them in order? If that's alright, we can go ahead and do that. The first thing that we're going to have is the discussion motion, which will be the process of appointing planning commission members. So, oh, and here's Reid. So I, I had sent. Hello, Reid.
Hi. We got caught by a discussion of a sewer officer, the other, what is it? Trailing, trailing water. Oh, Jared wanted to.
Oh, yes. Yes, they, we've had, they've been working on our audit all week with the, well, actually not all week, but Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so almost. And when we're done with that, Jared will probably have some things to report to us on that.
He said he expects about a hundred findings that had to be fixed.
Ooh.
And a lot of those are going to end up being, some that are going to be, things that are going to be in expense to the city. Some won't be as far as just updating some of our ordinances. So we can, but we're not going to, I think we have about seven days or I.
Said you have thirty days to respond and then six months to make the changes after you get the material.
Yeah.
At least it normally takes about twenty days to get the report from.
Okay. They've been working hard. They started first thing in the morning and they've been going all day long, all day long with that. Okay, anyway, so, um, appointment process of, of planning commission members. Um, Reid, Debbie is on Zoom and Lisa said she would be coming late.
Perfect.
So, so I've gone through, because I know at one time at the, at the meeting on the twenty third, it was discussed about different cities and what they did. And, you know, I went through and called a bunch of cities because we had some that maybe weren't represented quite correctly. There are thirty cities that are here in Weber and Davis County. Every city but two has the same language that we do. There's two that do it differently, and if you go back to the state code, which is also in here, it is up to each city that we are supposed to have some kind of code that ends up dictating the process that we are going to use. Um, I know as far as Roy's, it did say mayor and city council, but if you actually, they have different ways that they end up reporting them. And some are on Unicode and have a little more detailed, some aren't, and so it ends up making it a little bit different. But when I actually called them.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, Debbie, yes.
Um, are we, are we going to, is there other steps or a work meeting? Or are we just going over the notes that we've been sent or?
No, I think this is just kind of a little background and then we, we do need to talk about this. So anyway.
Okay, because I, I've read through all of this stuff.
Good, it's good. I'm, I'm really glad.
Other things to discuss.
Yeah, yeah. So it, it was actually Steve Parkinson, who's the planning and zoning administrator of Roy. Anyway, um, just as you can see, there are, most of the cities end up doing it the same. That doesn't mean that we do. I feel like they probably feel like there's a reason why it was. So that is something we need to discuss and decide what we're going to do.
Did, so this was sent, correct? So you sent it to the city, this amended ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
That's, well.
I still like.
So it wasn't in the packet? So that's the one I think it. So that's what we're discussing is, is that amendment.
Yeah, since as I mentioned to you, um, I think.
That's the one.
Yeah. But we, we didn't, I didn't see it in the packet, so.
Yeah, it's not in the packet, but is this kind of what?
Yeah.
Let me see it again.
That's, that's close.
In fact, I can give you a copy of that, Reid.
You got more than one?
I kept it.
More than one. Brandon did it, so I plugged it in.
So I think, as I mentioned to you, Bryce, we had received, well, Morgan had five different copies of the ordinance. And the last one that we received was even a little bit different than the one that we had had on the meeting of the twenty third.
Yeah, so, so Reid had sent one over to the city on Wednesday and I did as well.
And this is not the most current. That one.
This one is, yeah. This one is right here. That's the one you sent.
So that's that. That language in the second part, which I think is important.
So this is the one that was sent to the city and, uh.
And did you notice one of the whereas's was not included?
Yeah, that's inconsequential, I think.
And there was also some additional language under number six.
Yeah, because, you know, if someone can't make a planning commission meeting, or excuse me, a city council meeting that are sworn in at, they should, you know, and then there's a planning commission meeting the next week, then they should be able to be sworn in there.
Next available time.
Yeah, next available time, so make it a little bit more easy. So, so yeah, it was actually a benefit to Reid caught that.
The reason, Debbie, why I was reviewing this is because as it, as it said, it's, this is what the majority of the cities in Utah do this, because it allows for a check and a balance system. So you have somebody appointing, somebody approving, rather than the same one appointing and the same one approving.
Well, our, uh, the way we were looking at it, didn't just do, do the city council. So I, there are, there was some confusion about that for me.
So is this clear, though, this new ordinance here that we'll do tonight, that's, there's no questions there?
Well, well, except for there are, and I put that down in the discussion items, which we need to talk about. So it says the mayor and the city council shall separately recommend for appointment the members of the commission. So if you go down and these were some of the questions that I asked. So if the code is changed, what process is in place? We don't really have a process for how that's going to happen. Does it mean that the mayor recommends, each city council member recommends? Are you saying that the city council get together and they recommend? We haven't really established that process. And then, you know, as I said, if the city council is recommending as a group, what's the process for them recommending? You know, if you go through Far West, they have a pretty step-by-step process, and it is their planning commission that does it. And it also in Sunset, it's their planning commission that does it.
We looked at Far West, we like with their process, I think that was good.
So you would like the planning commission to do it, not city council?
Well, I think, I think, um, we can formulate this, you know, we don't have to do it tonight, but we can formulate the process of how the interviews go and, and selection and grading and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, there are clearly some logistical problems. You don't want to have a group of people interview by two different groups. You gotta somehow do that together. So yeah, you'd have to work something out.
So I guess that was my question, if there are some logistical things to work out. And as of after tonight, we won't be reappointing anyone until a year. So is there any reason to do this tonight, rather than for us to get some of these things in place to have in our ordinance? As far as how we are going to do that? Because the way this is written right now, it doesn't really clarify any of that, how it's going to be done.
Well, I, I think the most important thing, our, our contention is, is we're eliminated from the process. We, our, um, responsibilities have been taken away by the legislature. And they're going to the planning commission, which is an elected body, or excuse me, an appointed body. So we believe we should have some say in, in who's going to, uh, you know, fill those seats and make those decisions. And I, I think if we're all working together, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
So, so really, you know, I, you can argue it either way. I see, I see benefits with one way and the other way. Um, but the climate's changed quite a bit because of the legislature, so, uh, I think it's time we, we try this way. And if it doesn't work, obviously, some of these cities, they probably, they didn't, did you call him or Jayce? I can't remember, cause I talked to him, he said he called him.
Uh, I don't know if he called him or not, I called him.
Okay. So I, I think he, I think he said he helped formulate some of these questions, so I wasn't sure if you actually talked to him or not, but.
No, I, I did not.
So I think, I think a lot of these cities are going to become aware of, you know, cause obviously you're not following their ordinance if they say one thing. And then you, and then you called them and they said, no, this is how we do it. So, but anyway, so I guess my.
How you need to, how you need to understand it, Bryce, is there are different ways that people post their ordinances online. And if it's under Munich code, they're a little more complete than if they're not. Sometimes there are summaries. And if you went through several different cities, and I don't know how many that you actually looked online, but there's a different process that they do it. So it's not that they're saying one thing and doing another. If Roy says mayor and city council, it is the mayor and city council, because the mayor appoints, city council approves. So, so that is, if you go in and, and actually get to where all of the specific language is. My only thing is, is if we're going through the process of changing an ordinance, why aren't we changing it how it should be all at once? Because we, we don't have any specifics to.
Because we may not know that. I mean, that, I think that's Bryce's point, is that we're, we're changing the ordinance, but the process, the process of getting to that point, you know, as far as who's appointed, doesn't have to be tonight. That's something that we can look over several examples and work through, but we've got the ordinance in, in place as far as who will be appointing. And again, like Bryce explained, the reason we're changing this is because the role of the planning commission has changed. The, the, their role is.
Only one small part.
No, the, the, the role of the planning commission now is if it's a one or two single family home, it never comes to the city council. It just stays right with the planning commission. So where they're an appointed group and the city council is a voted, I mean, we're voted in, then why wouldn't we have some say on that? And so the point is, is that we're trying to get this ordinance in, in place. And as far as the process is to how we're going to determine who will be appointed, that process can be done in the upcoming months without, without having any negative effect.
So with that, if you go back to the state code that says each city has to establish, an ordinance must define the number in terms of the members, alternate members, if any, and the mode of appointment, that ordinance must also establish rules of order and procedure for use by the planning commission. So I don't know that this one sentence explains all of that, because even the mode of appointment is not very clear here. And when you say that you didn't really ever have a say, you did. City council has always had a say, because.
Just bring that back into context. We didn't, we didn't have a say, the city council did not have a say in who was appointed. And that's, that's where, that's what we're discussing, is about who will be appointed.
So in April of twenty twenty four, when I brought a name for appointment and they were voted down by the city council, was that person appointed?
What's the question?
So in April, I brought a name forward for someone to be appointed. It might not have been April, maybe it was June, May, I think it was May, I could go back a little. But in May of twenty twenty four, I appointed someone, city council voted them down and they were not appointed.
They were not approved.
Yes. They, they, they were not appointed because you didn't approve them. City council has always had the ability to vote those people down, always. If you don't approve someone, they don't go forward. So even if the mayor, so even if I would have, the, the week when I appointed these three men, if three of you would have voted against them, they would not have been approved, but, but they were.
So if they're, if, where they're not approved, so then where does it go back for Reid, to appoint someone else? Whose lap does that go back into for appointing someone else?
Well.
The way it is written today?
Currently, in the last twenty-four years, the mayor appoints, city council approves. But as we know, this time I included Malcolm, um, I included Debbie. You know, we had talked about if we want to include a member of the planning commission on that committee.
But I think, I think what you're talking about is who interviewed them, not who appointed them.
Correct.
So the appointment came.
From the mayor as our ordinance, and then city council approves, correct? If, if you would have voted them down and you two do.
Advise and consent is how it says, so we.
That's how it's been.
The whole voting process, though, was, wasn't quite straightforward. And that, that was where I had a little bit of a problem with it. So, um, if, if it, if it would have been different, I would have voted different.
So what, what do you mean by that, Debbie? Can you explain a little bit what?
Well, because in the work meeting, we had discussed that Sheldon and Blake would be put on the next, the next meeting. If we went ahead and went with Sherry's recommendations, I voted that way and then that did not happen the next week. And there has been a lot of discussion and a lot of problems getting them to this point. And, um, I, I feel that it should have went a lot smoother and there shouldn't have been any contention about it. And that, that to me was a little bit of a, of a problem. It should have just been as it was spoken.
Well, all I'm seeing is I feel like before we change an ordinance, because after tonight, we will have no new planning commissions appointed for a year.
True.
And that will give us a year that we could go through and decide, so when we do our, our ordinance, we are actually following state code as it defines that we should.
Oh, is that, Sherry?
Um, if you go, Debbie, I don't know if you have your, um, powers and duties book there with you, it's on page one, sixty-two.
I'm just, I'm just going straight off of Utah state.
Okay, it says ten nine eight three zero one.
Which one is it?
Ten, ten nine eight three zero one.
Three oh one.
Three, yeah.
Three oh one. So it's ten, uh, ten, nine, eight, three oh one. Thank God I put it.
Okay, yeah, I've got that pulled up.
Mm-hmm. And it, and it outlines how it should be, and I, you know, I said that, that this applies to someone, well, anyway, it, it went through.
The ordinance is down to the planning, right?
Mm-hmm. So it goes through and lists everything that it should include. So all I'm saying, like I mentioned, each municipality, we have to have an ordinance establishing it. We have to define the number in terms, municipality chooses alternate members, mode of, mode of appointment, one sentence stating the mayor and the city council shall separately.
Um, this does not say all of that in this Utah state legislation.
Um, ten nine eight three oh one. Yeah, that's what it, that's what it says. Reid, look that up for us.
I, I looked at it too, I, either, either way we do it, it's gonna follow the code.
Well, but this, so again.
Cause we, we don't have right now in our ordinance how we choose alternate names and all that stuff, so there's still, still.
Well, they're used to not, this is, they changed this.
Well, anyway, there's still, there's still holes in our ordinance now, so.
But that was what my question was, then, does this mean that the mayor does and the city council does? Each city council member separately does? You know how you read through Far West?
Mm-hmm.
I, I wasn't even sure what this language even meant when you said the city council, the mayor and the city council shall separately recommend. So does that mean the city council is a body recommends, or you recommend, Dell recommends, Ryan recommends, Lisa does? And then do we, and then do we have a, a grading?
I, I'm sorry, I, I, I think that's where it says the city council, that's as a group, that's a body. We, the city council is a body.
So how do you get together then to do that? Because you can't meet as a group, so somehow there has to be a.
I would think, given just a little time, we'll work through that process. And there are ways that we can, we as a city council, uh, excluding the mayor, could also recommend or appoint members to be on the planning commission. There, there's ways to do that.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just saying we should maybe get that in place, so it's in our ordinance. Because if we pass this ordinance tonight, this language is not very clear of, of what it is. So anybody reading our ordinance and it says the city council shall separately, so you just made some clarifying there. So what Debbie's saying is the mayor is one person, the city council as a body will separately, so you'll get together to recommend, but you, you can't get together and who does the interviewing? Cause like Reid said, so I interview and then you divide the city council into groups to, or how?
Well, I think you're trying, I don't have some challenges there. If the city council's gonna interview, you'd have to have an open meeting and you can do that.
Sure, I mean, I think, I think you're trying to complicate it to where it, like, it can't be done, but I think our point is it, it can be. If we just get this ordinance in place, then we'll refine it and, and we've, we've got time to do that.
The, the main point is that we would like a say, that's all we're asking.
Yeah, you always have had a say.
Well, we, we want a little bit more of a say than, than this decides.
Well.
Well, the, the current statute is advise and consent, so the advice part has never been defined very well, and you could certainly do that. Uh, you could define what it means to advise, uh, and that could mean that there are at least two city council members in a review panel along with the mayor and others, uh, and whatever that group comes up with is the name that comes, rather than a single selection, that's possible. Um, so there, there are some things you could put in there that might be, might be helpful.
Sure.
Isn't, isn't there a way we could, I mean, isn't there a way we could kind of skill you what we're doing? But the city council, who is, who is, um, interviewing with the mayor, could individually give their ideas to the city council members? And then they could each decide for themselves and come up with a name? I mean, all it basically is, is the city council adding names to the pool that the mayor, you know, has. It's just another, it's just another couple of names. That's, that's all it is. And then it's decided from that who would name.
I, there, there's gotta be a smooth way. I, I can say that for many, many years, I, in, in various positions, county attorney, attorney general, interviewed many, many people. And seldom would I ever do it by myself. I'd usually have three or four others with me, and when we finished, we'd sit down and together we'd decide who the person should be. That's ideally how it would go. Now, how you delineate that in, in an ordinance, I'd have to get some thought, but that's sure works well.
That's what I'm seeing, rather than us passing ordinance tonight that we have to go back and change. And if we give Reid some time to think about and we work out how we would like this to say, so when we do our ordinance, it's something that we do, because, because there's, we're not going to be appointing any more, like I mentioned, planning commission members for a year. We have a month or two. We could give Reid some time to go through, and maybe we want it to be as specific as Far West. There was by, theirs were, was by far the most specific. Sunsets, I called the mayor of Sunset and he actually sent me theirs, and he had a little more specific language in his as well. Cause like I said, if, if you have Munich code, it's a little better. Some of the others, you would really have to call the city to even find out. So that, that's just what I'm recommending, let's just give Reid some time to, and then, and it's not that this won't be back on, because we will put it back on the agenda, I just don't understand why we need to do it tonight when we still have so many questions.
I think what our thought is, is just putting it in motion so it's in place and then we'll refine it. We have time to refine it. But these, this, this, this sets, sets a, a starting point. It sets a mark that we're, we're, we're looking at, so that we don't miss the mark with something that wouldn't support this.
Well, and I think we're always really careful with our ordinances. I don't think we've ever just passed an ordinance with the thought, you know, and then let's wait and change it next month, so.
No, and I'm not implying that, I'm not implying that. I'm just saying that this is something that I think has been brought to our attention mainly because of how the state legislature now looks at the approval of subdivisions. That, that's what's, that's really the foundation that started this, is because it just doesn't, there is no check and balance with the approval of subdivisions of one and two. There, there isn't. I mean, it goes to the planning commission, they sign off on it, and there's not, they don't, we don't even have to have public hearings anymore.
The check and balance is the.
Hopefully you do that.
Yeah, that.
Hopefully you do that, but you don't have to.
But we don't have to.
But the check and balance is the technical review committee, so there is still a check and balance? Because you still do have the city planner, the city engineer, the chairman or someone from the planning commission. Um, you have, who am I missing? Some, uh, uh, public, the director of public works, so they all have to approve that. It's like it used to be, and then Tracy would send a memo, and when, by the time planning commission got it, it would say, everything has been approved, all of the well-served letters are there. So it's not like now they blindly are giving the subdivision.
No, no, don't, I didn't say blindly.
Yeah, so there is check and, there is some check and balance.
Create a picture there that I, or words that I didn't say, I don't, I don't mean that, but anyway.
Any more discussion, you know, I don't know that we were necessarily going to agree on, on this, cause I, I'm still, I'm still recommending, there's no, we don't have to have this done tonight because we're not appointing any. I would sooner like to see Reid take some time and us even discuss it. And then I would like to see something in our ordinance more specific, like Far West, that delineates who's going to be on that committee, an actual process of doing that. So when we have our ordinance written, it's not we passes tonight and then two months later we pass a new ordinance.
Well, it's just.
I haven't looked at other cities, I could do that if you wanted me to, but I have not done that.
Yeah. Most of the cities, like I said, are the exact same wording as ours, unless if you go to, um, Far West. And that, theirs has a pretty technical one that says on it. Most of them do in there more delineate how they appoint, if they do have substitutes, how if someone is replaced, how that happens. Most of them are fairly simple and it, and every one of them, like I mentioned, except for those two. But Far West, if you read through it, they, they have a really, um, exact process and they have like, even as far as they say standard interview questions, which, which we did that, Malcolm produced, um, a list and we used those same. And, and they talked about the interviews in a closed meeting. I mean, if you go through and read theirs, it talks about the panel, how they should rank the candidates, determine which candidate shall be recommended to the city council. So they have a, you know, it's, it's quite a detailed process.
So, so let me ask. Have you checked with, uh, do you go, you go to those meetings, the league meetings? Have you looked to see if other cities are doing what you're thinking, that because of the change in the approval process, that maybe they're changing planning commissions? I don't know.
I wouldn't be surprised if other cities start to do it.
Well, that'd be interesting to know.
And that's in this process that you're talking about, I don't know that all that was approved in one setting. I don't know if they approved an ordinance and then over time, you take a city like Far West or some of those that have been around longer.
Well.
Maybe this has kind of been a process where they've refined things, and that's what, that's what we would like to do to, you know, the reason you change things is to make it better.
I can tell you when Far West changed this, it was with their current mayor, because I spoke with him, and it used to be the same that ours was. And he said when he became mayor, he felt like that the planning commission should be the ones selecting other members on the planning commission. So, so theirs changed to this, and when the mayor was elected, Mayor Fippen, I think that was, um, I don't know if he went in, he might have even gone in just a year ago, or it might have been two years ago. And that, that's when they did theirs, cause theirs used to be the same as ours. So, well, I.
So they haven't improved upon it, they think.
Let's move on.
Yeah, let's move on. So Reed, let's have you look at that, that would be good. If you'd maybe see, and we could look, and we can be asking, you know, if we go to league meetings and.
We still wanna put that up for vote, so.
Well, it still is on the agenda, so it will be. Okay, let's move on.
So the problem is, can I just interrupt here? We're gonna, we're gonna vote on minutes tonight from the twenty-third of January. And in those minutes, it says that, um, drives me to motion, um, to go from five to seven members in the ordinance document brought forward by the council in its entirety minus ten dash five B dash two, number one, first sentence. So that was the motion that we voted on and approved last time. So that has to happen this time in order to fulfill the motion that was made last time. Correct?
I'm not following.
You passed one last time.
Yeah.
Continue. Here's, here's the one which.
Councilmember Wilcox, motion to approve ordinance blank, ordinance increasing number of, uh. Alright, oh, so it was passed in its entirety, minus two, which is the one that is changed here. And then you pass it, so they, they took that line out, and then they passed everything else.
Is that, read on.
Okay. Uh, first sentence, the first sentence is brought to the city council meeting on February sixth for, to be the first action item on the agenda. The effective date, January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Councilmember Hill, second, so it does say it has to be done tonight, or you have to look at it tonight. Now, if you agree to change, I guess you can, but it's a, it has to come up tonight.
Yeah, we can change the minutes, but.
Oh, not change the minutes.
No, not change the minutes.
Have it come up and put it off.
Right.
Yes, yes, so it will come up. That will be our first item, a discussion motion. So someone will either make a motion, or someone can make a motion that it's tabled for further discussion. Okay. Okay, um, so another thing that we need to talk about is the staggering of the, how we want to do the staggering of those. So in the, we had, there's two different ways, and you know what, kind of made, and we talked about that. It could be a, a three, two, two. And then you have one year where you're not getting a new member. It can be two, 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 one. And every year you're getting a new member, but we still then need to decide how we're going to be staggering those. So I, I don't know how we want to do that, um.
Well, if you're gonna do anything other than the two, 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 one, or one, two, 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 you're gonna have to change last week's ordinance, because it says no more than two in any one year.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to change last week's two to add in this sentence, one sentence as well, aren't we? Because this wasn't in there last week. The sentence, if possible, are at the next available city council or planning commission meeting. Because that wasn't.
I remember that was in there, I don't think it was.
Yeah, it wasn't in there last time, but it was in, it's something that has been added. So that'll have to be changed too.
Well, you're gonna have to pass something today then, if you do that.
So it's, in the ordinance, as a law, two.
In any one.
Mm-hmm, is how is your name?
Who has last week's?
So was it option B you recommended?
Yeah, that was the one. I, I just put two options, because I thought we could discuss it and see how, the, the only difference would be is one, you'd have a year where you didn't have to appoint somebody new, which, and then that doesn't matter. And then, but then we still just need to decide if, which option we wanna do, and then how we're going to decide who is going to have those.
So let's say we deal with option B. How do we collectively determine who falls into those categories?
Let's see, is option B the one?
One, two, two, two.
Years remaining? Not, not the one, two, three, four, where there's actually years remaining.
No, no, no. No, option B is just, um, we have one that has one year, and then there's two, two, two. So two, and we have, um, two existing planning commission members that for sure will have two. So, so my thinking was, because I don't really know how we go about fairly doing this, because I don't know if we wanna go by how many years they've served, then they have less, they have more. So my option was, we put five names in a, in a bowl, we draw them out. And I, to me, that seemed like the fairest way to do it then. We just put names and we draw them out, because how do we go about determining who we feel like?
We either do that, or we do a blind vote with all of this.
Sure, yeah.
And then combine votes.
Yeah, so if they, if, you know, in my mind, they do a good job to keep them in there, you know? So the guy that gets one year, you know, someone's gonna get one year.
Yeah, but, but how do we know?
Well, you just said you'd pull them out.
No, I'm just, no, I'm just saying, oh, you're saying then the person that gets one year, then in a year, we reappoint them.
Right, because, because someone's, someone's gonna get the short straw.
Somebody's gonna get, yeah. I know, someone's, someone's going to get one year, no matter what. And that's what I thought, if we just drew them out, and then you're right. If after a year, if they reapply, of course, then, and then with, however, we, at that time, have our, um, ordinance. If it's a matter of a, a, you know, panel, then, yeah.
But after this year, we feature the appointment as four-year, you know?
Right.
Yes, yes.
Well, yeah, well, I think Brad, Matt and Bryce have two years left, right? Right, but the do appointees after this year will all be four years.
Yes.
And that'll keep you in the right seat if you do that.
Yes.
And if somebody resigns, then the person coming in to replace him doesn't do four years, they do.
They finish up. But how do we do a blind vote with Debbie on Zoom? How would that work?
How far away do you live, Debbie?
That, that, that's what I said, Debbie. I said we just, I just put all five names in a thing, and I thought, let's just draw them out. Then it's fair for everybody. Well, well, then we're just saying that if they had a blind vote, so everybody wrote down and passed four around, but we would be able to do that.
Oh, could I have Morgan do it for me?
How?
Call her on the phone?
Call her on the phone?
Yeah, you can do that. Call her. And maybe next year, there's. But after they all, after this is all done, everybody will be on the floor.
They might wanna be done after one year.
Yeah. So not, not stagger them tonight? I mean, it's no rush to stagger them tonight anyway, necessarily. I mean, everybody, for sure, everybody's a year. Like, everybody's going to have, I mean, I guess I'm questioning, how do we ask them if they're not all here?
That's not the years.
Yeah.
Have to ask them at the commission meeting.
Yeah, we could ask them at the commission meeting. Yeah, just wait and put it off to commission meeting.
So these, bottom, these would be four years.
Yeah.
One by one.
Three years, two years.
Fill out our ballot.
And then when they do it again, it'll be four.
And then just ask them. Debbie, did you hear what Lisa suggested?
I did.
Do you want to ask them?
Sorry, oh, I was just saying that it's a possibility that there may be somebody that wants to just try it for a year, and they might find they might not like it, and, or they love it, and then they wanna apply again, or they just wanna try it for this year and see. So we could ask at the commission meeting that, you know, we could ask that question to all of them and see. But we could also do our, our tally vote. We could come into offices, fill out our ballot, leave it, and then ask. And if it kind of compares great, if it doesn't.
They could bring it to you, Debbie.
Somewhere to go.
Yeah, I, I guess I just don't want it to become a, a popularity contest, you know?
Just draw it out of half then.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I just don't want it to be that then we all vote, and then, then someone, I don't know.
Okay.
Cause I mean, everybody, when they, everybody that interviewed thought it was a four-year term. I don't think anybody that interviewed thought it wasn't going to be. So that's what I thought, if we just draw it out.
So should we just draw it out when they're, when they are at their meeting?
Yeah, should we do that?
Why don't you have a, if you're gonna do it, draw it out. Put, put two, one year, one, one year, two, three years, and two, four years, to let them draw it out. It's gonna be sure.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
At their meeting.
At their meeting, okay. Morgan, take a note of that, we'll do that then.
So, um, what, so when are we going to determine their, their length of terms?
At their, at their meeting, Debbie, and we'll just have them draw it out. And it'll just, one will say one year, and then it'll say three year and four year. Well, there'll be two that'll say three year, two that'll say four year, and one will say one year. And they will just draw that out.
Okay, and then the ones that are offered for two years, we'll just stay two years?
Yes, yes, their terms were already established, so theirs already stay in. Okay. Okay, um, any discussion on Title Xan? Mainly chapter?
Everybody read it carefully?
Oh, yeah, every word.
You know, about all I can say on it, and I, I haven't read it as closely as I could. But I think, I think so far it's been working. And I think if you try it, and, and you get reports back that it's not working, then we'll look at change.
Yeah.
The other thing that I think you keep in mind, if this, if this management committee works, I think you look at maybe doing that for all subdivisions, not just one and two. Uh, except the others could come to the council for approval, not the planning commission. But it might simplify the whole process.
Yeah. Well, so far, I know Malcolm's started working on it, and I think he feels like it's going okay, don't you, Malcolm? Feel like, you know, I, I, I think really for the most part, it maybe will work a little bit easier even for him, so.
The comments I get back is it's tougher than it was before. Maybe that's because Malcolm's a heartache. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know. He, he hasn't said, it seemed. Okay, so any, any questions or comments on that at all? Okay, um, so of course we have some swearing in tonight, that, we don't need to discuss that, but the, um, city council assignments, is that something you wanna discuss now? We still have a few minutes that we can talk about that.
Can I talk about one?
Sure. Yeah.
Did I get the email from, uh, Mr. Free?
Oh, yes, I did.
About the cemetery?
Yes.
Yeah.
What do we all think about that?
Oh, there's all these car races, they're there.
They're speeding people through there every night.
Always.
How do we fix it?
And they're like, you know, of course, where he is, it was like, hey, this house, who knows?
They drag racing, or just going?
They did drag racing there, and, you know, we use it as a thoroughfare instead of a cemetery road.
It's a way to cut halfway through the block to get to the next. You cut through the cemetery, because there's a road that goes from one road to the next subdivision to the east, or vice versa. And it's a way to cut through the block.
But it's.
You know what, I, I don't know.
We can't gate it off, number one.
How would we gate it off, yeah?
The only solution maybe might be speed bumps.
And then we won't want that kind of plowing.
Cause it's so close.
Yeah, that's what happens with the snow, snow plows.
Dips and stuff.
I haven't had a chance to talk to Jared, they've been all week in this audit. But yeah, that's, and, because I've also had a complaint about they're really speeding now down fifty-five hundred north at four thousand. And so they're concerned about that as well. So I can, I can bring it up with Jared and see what we could possibly do. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to ask him because of, they've been. Let me make a note, Ryan, so I don't forget.
Did he send an email to you two, you need to be?
Yeah.
Bill and Lisa.
Did he send another one besides the one that he sent?
That didn't go to these guys originally. We got the one, and then I told him, we need to send it to these two.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. Okay, we can ask about that. Okay. One, one thing too, before I go on to that. So next week's planning commission meeting is actually going to start at five-thirty, because at six o'clock, we have Rob Terry from the, he's going to come do a land use training. He's, um, with the State O, um, Bunsman Office. And so if any of you are interested in coming to hear that training, um, anytime, we can have someone from the, um, Bunsman Office. I feel like they do a really good training, and they're going to leave some time for questions. So that is their meeting. And then on February twentieth, and I'll announce this again too in meeting, is we will have the representative from LRB is going to come, because we yesterday finally received the fiscal analysis back on the proposed with Terra Strata, that there's going to be the proposed with the grocery store possibly. And so we, so they, you will be getting that next week. We figured we would get that sent out. It's quite a lengthy report. So again, it's like another one, like, you know, the Title Xan. I don't know, uh, any of you will really be able to, I don't know. But so they're actually going to come to city council meeting, and that will be February twentieth. And so we're also going to invite all of our planning commission members to be there that night so they can hear this report. And we, it's been a few months incoming. If you remember, we voted approve that last September, but they didn't really get all the information from us probably till, I don't know, the end of October. Anyway, they've been gradually working. It's, it's quite an in-depth report, because they had to get a lot of information from the state taxes and, so that'll be good. So next week, if anybody wants to come and hear from the, um, Bunsman, and then again on the twentieth, we'll be back. So, okay. Okay, so city, um, council assignments. We've tabled this a couple of weeks, so we need to, and, oh, did you have something else?
No, it's on the thing, but go ahead. I was just gonna say, I know the one change that, or the addition that we wanted, maybe we ought to talk about that first. Uh, the budget and finance oversight.
Yeah. Um. I, I think there was, there's somebody that we had on that before, budget and finance?
But I think.
I don't remember, I was on, not last year, but I was thinking maybe the year prior to that, we maybe had someone that did that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, and, and I, I don't know.
But I, I think, uh, as I, uh, Ryan, cause he, you know, I think he would be the good fit for it, you know? And he expressed that, hey, I want some training. And so within that, you know, uh, organization that we provide with training through the league, or whoever, you know?
Yeah.
Especially title of the officers, when somebody understands what they're doing, right?
Yeah, I know, I, I, I told you, I, I think that's a good idea. And I also had mentioned to Ryan, we could even have, Kami usually comes once a month, and she kind of goes through things. And so we could arrange that time when she is here. Um, and something else we could also consider too, is having Kami come once a month. If we asked her, like, the first so many minutes to come and kind of go through that with us as well, I think would be really good. We get those financial statements, and it's not anything that we approve, it's just something that's in our packet. So I think that would be something that would be, you know, really good. Cause I, I'm almost thinking that that was something that used to be. And you know, when it comes to just general over, uh, with, you know, council member assignments, these are just things that we need representation from the city. And a lot of times, these are boards that not one person can attend every board meeting every month. And that's why it's so important to have someone from the city council that it can go to those meetings. And really, we should give more time at every one of our work meetings where you actually give us a report. Like, for instance, from the fire, if there's something, or from the sewer, or like emergency preparedness, or whatever, so.
So to put that in place, Reed, do we just agree?
Just agree it?
Just agree on it?
Yeah.
So when we motioned it?
Yeah, you include that in the motion to approve it, that you have that, what do you call it, the financials are?
Budget, yeah.
Budget.
Budget and finance.
Yeah, just under budget and finance.
Budget and finance oversight.
Yeah. So I, I don't know, I, I don't know if someone has different assignments. Um, some of these assignments, you know, we, we've done, and I, I've kind of gone through and put a needed city council assignments. And I tried to put down which ones had monthly meetings, so, so no one was assigned to more than one monthly meeting. But, but some people are going to have to be assigned to more than one monthly meeting, because we have more things that they have to go to. I know, like with emergency preparedness, Bryce, I didn't know if you still wanted to plan on doing emergency preparedness. And I think you have monthly meetings, don't you, with that three meetings a month with the county? Animal control, I don't know who wanted.
Yeah, I, I put animal, I'd be going to do animal control, and I know that's a.
A monthly meeting? Okay, because I thought, you know, these that have the, the monthly meetings. And then you'll still do the fire district, because that's going to be a monthly meeting. Um, Debbie, I know you'd go to the sheriffs, you do the huddle meetings, don't you?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's.
And that's three days a week. Is it still Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
There, what was that?
Is it still Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Yeah, it's three days a week.
So in that, and I think Debbie, along with that, could also be like the VIPS program and public safety, don't you? I thought all those went along right together.
The VIPS program is, I, there's just not a lot of interest out here. I don't know how to get, you know, I tried to post things on Facebook, I. I don't know how to get, you know, I tried to post things on Facebook, I done flyers, and I don't know. People don't want to put the time in volunteer-wise to get certified.
So do you, so should we still list that as a council assignment then, or are you thinking we should just take that off?
Well, maybe take it off as a council assignment and then maybe do it as a special project.
Okay.
Are you talking the VIPS program?
We're talking the VIPS program. And because?
Yeah, maybe three or four that say they'll be interested, but they have to have more than that to have a class.
And, and then also it said public safety, but is, was there something specific? That was one we had had listed last year, but is there something different with that, or?
That's part of the sheriff's department, actually.
Okay, so we'll put that. Okay, and I know Lisa said you'd still be willing to do youth council?
Yeah, we use counsel.
You do.
So just a question on that VIP, so, so we just let that?
No, Debbie just said, let's have it be a special project, so then we could, I mean, it could spin ongoing thing we work on.
She, she kind of works on, I mean, who, when you say a special project, would you still have that up, Debbie?
I'll, I'll still work on it and have us all, you know, see if we can all work on it together. Because one council member alone, um, isn't able, I mean, I haven't been able to get any excitement with this. So maybe all of us as a group, we could do something.
The big hurdle is the transportation. For somebody to volunteer and then have to drive clear into the twelfth street sheriff's office to pick up a vehicle. Patrol is a big hurdle. Like if Hoover City could donate or allow the use of a city vehicle, and you could throw the magnet on the side of the board and have it retrofitted, they'll give us all the equipment to do it. But if it's, it's, they could come right here in the parking lot and pick it up and go. I think you'd have a lot more interest in it rather than dragging thirty minutes to the sheriff's office. That was my thing, it would be, it's just trying to hook up with somebody in Far West and meet at sheriff's office and, you know, coordinate all that, it was, it was hard to do that. To have somebody, if you had two in our community that would do it with a vehicle, I think you'd have interest.
So I don't know that this is even a possibility and would have to, when we go through budget and maybe not this year? But maybe that's something we could look at in our budget if we ever would be able to purchase a truck.
Yeah, trucks that are not used during the winter.
Just, just a public works vehicle or this vehicle sitting out here.
For the Toyota out there.
That's all, that's all you need, and you throw a thing on it and they give you a light and out.
And, and do they, but is it just at night, during the day?
Anytime.
Be, because, I mean, not this isn't used all the time, but there is.
Mostly at night is what I think.
So, because I, I think at night, that would, I think there would be one that they could. During the day?
Probably at night, except when you have events, like for tomato days, you might have it during the day too.
Okay, well, let's, let's look at that.
Just another idea, where they, where the sheriff's department provides.
Pay for the radio system, do you put in for us?
Yeah, they pay for the radio, they pay for the light that goes in, they pay for everything that needs to be retrofitted in the vehicle. And then we're allowed to just have it kept here.
One thought that's kind of the same, you know, where they, where the sheriff's department now provides gas, insurance, you know, everything that you talk, radio, everything. What if we just had someone?
Not gas.
That the city has to pay for the gas?
You have to pay for the gas.
If, um, what if we picked it up and brought it out here for someone to use their vehicle?
As long as you check it out for your shift.
They what, Debbie?
Take it head full or something?
Pick it up for a sheriff's, like if you're going to do any of this run, maybe go out and you sign it out for your shift. Because I, I was, I was thinking it would be great if we leave it out here for a day or two and, and run it. But, um, from what the sergeant that was over it told me, that we would have to go out there and sign it out and then sign it back in.
Uh, within like twenty-four hours, or?
Within your shift, so however long you have it.
Well, I see.
So that was kind of a little bit of a, you know, but there have been quite a few dips, uh, people lately, so I haven't talked with them since.
So why don't you talk to them, Debbie, about that whole idea? I think, uh, if they pay the cost and use more of your vehicles, that's pretty good deal.
Well, when I have a, I have huddle tomorrow, so I'll, I'll ask the sheriff, uh, if I can talk to him about that.
Um, the Western Weaver CTC has asked us to have one more person from the city beyond that committee. So I don't know if any of you are willing to do that. They have asked for two people from every city, from their, they call them key leaders, so from the city council.
Who was our other one?
Well, well, in the past, um, was it you, Ryan, that did it for a while? Bryce had done it for a while, Dell had done it for a while. I'm happy to do it, Lisa, would you want to?
But I can take my turn, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
They give good gifts, but they're partners.
You know what, that, that, yeah, they really do, don't they?
Yeah, they do.
It, well, you know, it really is an, an important thing, and they're going to be coming at one of our meetings and kind of talk about, you know, something that they, I mean, they have a meeting once a month that's sometimes probably hard to attend, but you can always zoom them. I mean, they don't expect, and they, even if you're, can't go every time, they don't always necessarily expect you to be there every time, because sometimes that's not, okay, well, we're.
When are their meetings usually?
They are the, the second Tuesday of every month at five thirty.
Oh, okay, that's workable.
Yeah, but, but their next one, they're having a kickoff meeting will be, and it was actually, I believe, the third, but I could let you know.
Okay, I'll tell them.
Okay, well, we're about out of time, we need to go out and get this meeting closed so we can start. So we'll have to finish talking about these when we're in our regular work meetings. So we have time, because we have to close this meeting and start another Zoom, it, it doesn't let it go through.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we would like to welcome everyone here. It is Thursday, February sixth, twenty twenty-five, and this is a Hoover City council meeting. I am Sherri Beam, and I am the mayor, and we're always happy to have everyone that is here and those that are watching. We have Debbie Marigoni, council member Marigoni, on Zoom tonight. So we are going to go ahead and have the Pledge of Allegiance by council member Hill, and then council member Northward will give the reverence.
Where'd you get with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and as a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather as residents of Hoover City, as council members and committee members, we express our gratitude to thee for the blessings of our freedoms here in this country, for the beautiful place that we live, and for the, the kindness of this community and the faith that it brings to us. We're grateful for health and strength, and pray that thou continue blessing our area with the things that we are in need of and the things that will benefit us the best. We pray for thy attendance upon us as we contemplate and think towards the things which will be best for Hoover City, and that as we come to a conclusion, we're confident about our decisions and that we can move forward with, with pride and with integrity. We're grateful again for this country, for those who serve in this country, whether by military or law, the fire. We're grateful for their sacrifices as well, and we pray for these lessons in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Just a couple of announcements, if you picked up an agenda, the agenda that was posted, there is one bottom item that talks about there is going to be approval of the, I believe it's the LR Parker subdivision. That is not on the agenda tonight. So there was an amended agenda that didn't list that, but we believe the one that we copied was, you know, possibly the one that lists that. And so that will not be on the agenda tonight. We would also like to welcome Lieutenant Slater here with us from the Weaver County Sheriff's Department. We appreciate all of them, and we're happy that he's going to be here with us now.
I've worked with him before, you get, you get him cream of the crop.
Okay, thank you, we're happy to have him here with us. Okay, just a couple of, um, upcoming events that you might want to be aware of. So next Thursday, the thirteenth, which is the planning commission meeting, their work meeting is actually going to start at five thirty. And at six o'clock, we are going to have, um, two people here. One of them, his name is Rob Terry, and he is going to be doing some land use training. He is with the state of Bunsman office. And so they're inviting anybody that would like to come, um, to ask questions. They, they present a lot of information, the state of Bunsman, and also Madison Abelis from the Wasatch Front Regional Council. So that training, so the work meeting will be from five thirty until six, and then the training will be from six until seven, and then their meeting will start at seven o'clock. And also at our next meeting on February twentieth, I don't know how many of you were aware, but the city council had permission to have someone do, um, economic, a fiscal economic study for the proposed, um, development that we may have coming up that could, could involve some venture commercial property. We finally received that study back, and so there will be somebody from that, it's from their company, that will be here on the twentieth at seven o'clock to do a presentation. So that might also be something that you want to be aware of. Okay, we're going to go ahead then and go through the minutes. So the first thing is the approval of the minutes for January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes? Any questions, changes on those?
I have a motion to do both at the same time.
I, I think we need to step right around.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, there was a motion by council member Hill, is there a second? Second by council member Will Cox, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the next one then is the minutes, and those work for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the twenty-third of January twenty twenty-five.
I, the only, the only, um, correction I could see on that is it was council member Will Cox, it's on page two, handed out suggested changes to ordinance to other council members and attorneys. I, I did receive one, I don't know where he, who were handed a copy, that was the only question I had.
Well, at the meeting, I was getting a copy.
Okay. Okay, that was, that was my only, I, I didn't know if they'd received one, but I, I did not receive a copy of that. Okay? Do I go ahead and send you that?
I may.
Oh.
I'll send it.
Okay. Then motion was made by council member Hill, seconded by council member Bowers, any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the first thing then, um, is a discussion motion, which we need to do by Will Cox, is the process of appointing planning commission members. So in the last meeting, there was an ordinance that was passed with some changes, and this is under, it's on ti, in Title X. And it is ten five B one, the establishment of the planning commission. And there were some changes that were made, there was one that was made at the beginning as far as aware as. There was a question under number one on ten five B two, and then there was, um, something also on ten five B two, number six. But there was also a sentence that was added as well, so discussion on this. We did discuss this at our work meeting, but there probably is more discussion that you'd want to do with this.
So we talked about amending the motion from last time, correct? Over twenty, oh, twenty twenty-five, actually, oh, one, we're gonna get amended?
Amendment motion. And I, I didn't prepare it that way, I had to prepare it as new ordinance.
It's oh two, how you prepared it, okay.
But you can do it, doesn't that actually matter?
And some things that we had discussed was if we needed to let Reed maybe come back with some more clarity. Currently, the Senate states the mayor and the city council shall separately recommend for appointment the members of the commission, subject to a majority vote of the city council, but we really aren't establishing how that's going to occur. Is the city council going to get together? How are we going to do the interview process? In our work meeting, we had talked about Far West has quite an explicit way that they do that, and, you know, it's governed by our state code. In our ordinance, there are a few things that they have mentioned that they would like us to have in our ordinance.
Well, as I mentioned earlier in our meeting, um, I don't know that all particulars have to be approved tonight. I think this can be re. I think this can be refined, and it might take a little time. But there are ways to put together an ordinance that would support this ordinance. It would refine ordinance that we would be approving tonight. But at some point, we need to take a step forward. And I wouldn't be surprised down the roadways, even if we waited longer to approve one, that we wouldn't find something that might have to be adjusted. So the idea of approving this ordinance tonight, I don't see any problem with improving upon that or making it better as we see the need.
I have almost the same lines. So I think words mean a lot, obviously. So what if we did this? Because what we're trying to do is work more as a council, just hey, this is your role, this is our role. How about if we go, "The mayor and city council shall work together to identify and select potential members subject to a majority vote of the city council."
So I guess still my question is?
I mean, we're gonna vote on it, so that indicates we're gonna work together and identify. So in the process, like Dale said, the process, we will work that out. But we're gonna take this first step here.
Well, I think we can further the same motion. It's been a month or two months, or whatever it is, when we finally identify a process that we wanna all agree on.
All right. Do you guys like that wording better? It means the same thing.
I like that wording better, Bryce.
What was the wording again, Bryce? Read that.
So it says, so the sentence that we want to change says, "The mayor and city council shall work together to identify and select potential members subject to a majority vote of the city council." And then the other, in six, where it talks about them getting appointed or sworn in is the same.
I would still like to have it as when we do our ordinance. Again, my thinking is we don't necessarily have to have this done tonight. So I don't understand why we would pass an ordinance tonight, then work on the ordinance, and then pay it back and pass on it. Because we, in two months from now, wouldn't it be better just to wait and just do our ordinance all at once when we have all the wording that we wanted? And then, because like we mentioned before, you know, that's not the only thing. Like, when you go through the state code and it talks about that it needs to define a member in terms of the members, alternate members, if any, the mode of appointment, must also establish rules of order. I think there's more to it than just changing one sentence. And we really won't have a need for this for a year. So I just don't see a reason to change an ordinance and then two months from now come back and change an ordinance. And we've discussed possibly checking with other cities and see if they're changing it. We haven't seen yet the effect of this new subdivision. Maybe other cities will be changing theirs. We haven't had a chance to talk to the Utah League yet to see if any other cities are changing it. Reed mentioned about possibly checking as well to see if there's some other language. You know, I think, I just don't see a reason to have to change it tonight when as of tonight, we will have all seven of our members, and that will give us some time that we could clarify the wording. And I would like to see a better procedure, even as Far West is. Because if you read through Far West, they have quite a detailed procedure rather than just a one sentence of how it's going to be done.
So do you prefer which sentence you guys prefer?
Read the first one, Bryce.
So the first one that Reed sent over, "The mayor and city council shall separately recommend for appointment the members of the commission subject to a majority vote of the city council." And some new verbiage might, it means the same thing. "The mayor and city council shall work together to identify and select potential members subject to a majority vote of the city council." They both mean the same thing, but one indicates that, hey, we need to work together.
How about, instead of work together, we say, "The mayor and city council shall collectively recommend members of the planning commission."
So are we going to have a committee? Should we put in there about doing a committee with who's going to? Or are we going to?
See, again, you're kind of pushing this forward further than maybe we want to move tonight. See, I think we're just trying to set in place an ordinance that we'll build on. And I don't know that we'll have a full year to have this in place. I think we would begin immediately to start refining this. But at least we've got something, we have a direction and a mark that we're trying to hit rather than just leaving it as it is now, than we leave, just leaving it the way we are now. And again, the whole, I know I'm just repeating myself, but the whole point of this is that the Planning Commission has a lot more responsibility than they've ever had before as given to them through the state legislature. You know, when they have the final say and may or may not have public hearings on a one or two single-family dwellings, that doesn't mean just one or two laws. That could be 100 homes of one family dwellings. They have, they make the final decision, and that would never even come to the city council. The body that's actually elected to represent our citizens, we would never see that. And so that was the whole point of this, is that maybe the city council, where we represent the cities who voted, members of the, where we represent the citizens who voted us in, maybe we ought to have a say in the appointment of who's going to be on that city council, who's going to represent it.
Sure. As we talked about in work meeting, the city council always has had a say because they have always voted. I guess we just, usually we have a little more time while working on ordinances. You know, we have been working on Title 10 now since, well, actually, the first draft came through in January. So I guess my question is, I just don't see why we are pushing this through tonight when why don't we work on this ordinance like we generally work on our ordinances and get this wording in place, get the procedure in place, rather than passing an ordinance that then, as you're saying, in a month or two, then we refine it? But why don't we refine it first and then do the ordinance rather than pass an ordinance and then refine? That's kind of backwards in the way we've usually done it.
We've actually been working on this for a while. So we've been working on this since January, just the same as Title 10.
Well, now, we've been working on Title 10 since January of 2024. And this, we started working on, the first time the wording was presented was January 23rd of 2025. So we just might have only had this now in front, I mean, I didn't even receive it that day until after the meeting. And so I just think that we should just refine it first and then pass an ordinance rather than pushing to rush through an ordinance and then go back, since there's no reason to have to do this tonight. Because we will have our planning commission.
I think I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion.
So let me, before I do that, the ball started rolling last meeting when we approved 2025-01. We're amending 2025-01 tonight. And we'll amend it again when we get a process in place. And you know, it's a couple of weeks, a month, 2017. So it's not that we're making a new ordinance. We started the ordinance last time. We're tweaking it this time. We'll tweak it again next time or the next time until we're happy with it. You know, there's nothing wrong with amending the ordinance to the point where we're all satisfied with it. So that's how I see it.
And because this is an ordinance that takes away the power of the mayor, it does need to be a roll call vote, and it has to be unanimous. And so I also get to vote on this, correct?
It has to be unanimous for everyone except the mayor.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
I don't know.
Unless you've already, did you already number the? This one, the other one?
Yeah.
Which one did you?
Just.
Did Title 10 changes, did you number that one yet?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion that we amend the ordinance oh, or oh dash two zero two five dash zero two. And we adopt, we adopt that. With the verbiage in 10 dash 5B dash two, your appointment in terms of office, it shall say, "The mayor and city council shall collectively identify and select potential members subject to a majority vote of the city council." And then the other sentence that we want to add in, the number six of the same heading, we will add, if common, if possible, or at the next available city council or planning commission meeting. That's to allow some flexibility when we're sworn in.
So the motion was made by Councilmember Will Cox. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Are we sure it's oh two?
I think it's oh one.
I think it's oh one.
Oh, one was the one you passed last time. So if you want to just amend that one, you do it and amend it all along. If you want to pass a new ordinance, it's oh two.
So it's oh one.
So you want to amend the other ones, is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna amend the oh one.
So did you clarify then, or did you forget that? Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Will Cox, and it was seconded by Councilmember Fowers. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, this has to be done by roll call vote. So Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Mayor Bingham? Nay. Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Will Cox?
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. So the next thing on our agenda, now I've lost my order, is the appointment of two Planning Commission members.
Sherri, real quick, we gotta approve Title 10.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Or is that?
No, we'll go ahead and do that. Yes, because now I'm not sure how something's going to be a little bit, oh wow. We'll talk about that, because now that kind of makes 7B not effective because I can't appoint them, because now it has to be collectively. The process has changed.
They were collectively decided upon in a work meeting.
Well, this hasn't been, this won't be a high due to post.
That's true, that's true. Okay. Okay, so now we have a public hearing to talk about the ordinance changes to Title 10 to comply with state requirements and authority of approval for one to two family residential use. And so is there any discussion from the council before we move into that public hearing? If not, I need a motion to move into a public hearing?
I'll make the motion to move from council meeting to public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Northrup and seconded by Councilmember Hill. So we now move into the public hearing. If anyone has any comments they would like to make concerning Title 10 and specifically Chapter 8. I don't know if everyone's, maybe I can just give a real quick brief of what that is before you come up. So the state legislature last year passed a new law that if it is a one and two family resident subdivision, then instead of it preliminarily going to Planning Commission, then City Council, then final to Planning Commission, City Council, it will now only go for final approval to City Council, or excuse me, to Planning Commission after it has been reviewed by the technical review committee. So if you want to come up and make a comment, anything about that, you have three minutes and come up and state your name. Okay, seeing no public comments, we need to move back into our regular meeting. Is there a motion to move it back into our regular meeting?
I'll motion.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Hill. Is there a second? Second made by Councilmember Will Cox. So now we're back into our regular meeting. So again, this is something we've been working on now for over a year. Does council have any questions? Anything on this?
I just make one request. If you don't take the motion, ask for it to be effective immediately after posting. So we don't have anybody saying we're not implementing.
Okay. Any questions? If not, does someone want to make a motion?
Did Reed, Malcolm, did we make the changes from two to one years? Okay. Jared, was Jared okay with that?
Yeah, Jared's fine with it.
Okay.
The question what that is, is sometimes depending on the weather, someone cannot get it done in one year. That was the whole reason.
We allow an extension to be filed.
But we can allow an extension to be filed. Okay, so is there a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Title 10 to be effective after posting.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Fowers. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by Councilmember Marigoni. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Oh, that's, we have to have a roll call vote, I'm sorry. Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Councilmember Will Cox?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, so the next thing we have then is appointment of two Planning Commission members, Sheldon Greener and Blake Severing. So we need to have a motion to approve those names.
I'll make the motion to approve Sheldon Greener and Blake Severing to the Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Northrup, seconded by Councilmember Hill. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
But it's separate, huh?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's your decision before.
That's why we have to do one at a time. Okay, so can we go back and do that?
Yeah, let's go back, can we do that?
Then I will make a motion to, to appoint Blake Severing to the Planning Commission.
I'll second him.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Northrup, seconded by Councilmember Hill. Any discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then I'll appoint, make the appointment of Sheldon Greener to the Planning Commission.
Okay, the appointment was, or the motion was made by Councilmember Northrup. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by Councilmember Will Cox. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to go ahead and do that swearing in. And we also have one additional member that we need to swear in, Amanda Prince. She was never sworn in when she was appointed on February 16th, 2023. So we're going to swear in the three Planning Commission members and also the deputy city reporter, Jamie Johnston. And we thought we would do the three Planning Commission members at the same time, and then we'll do the deputy. We'll let, should we swear in those Planning Commission first, and then we do the deputy? So, okay. And we thought we'd just do all three at the same time. If that's all right with you, and none of you have an objection to that, so we need Sheldon, Blake, and Amanda to come up.
Oh, I can't afford the firing squad. Where's the Bible?
Right. Okay, so are you ready, Ar? I, say your name.
I'm Sheldon Greener.
I am, have been appointed to the office of Hoover City.
I've been appointed to the office of Hooper City.
What is the office of Hooper City?
I've been appointed to the office of Hooper City. And do solemnly swear?
And do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State Utah?
The Constitution of the State Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And that I will discharge the duties?
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties. Of my office with fidelity?
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the motion of the appointment and swearing in a deputy city reporter Jamie Johnston. So we need.
Stay there, stay there.
Stay there.
You're okay.
So we need someone to make that a motion.
I will make a motion that we appoint as deputy city reporter Jamie Johnston.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Hill, is there a second?
I'll second it.
The second was made by council member Northrup, any discussion? I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Hi, Jamie Johnston, I'm Dave Johnson, having been appointed to the office of Hooper City. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey, and defend. And I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Utah, the Constitution of the State of Utah. And that I will discharge, discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Duty of my office with fidelity. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, we really do appreciate our employees and all of those that are in our planning commission and city council. Okay, and so the next thing on our agenda is the discussion and a motion at the twenty twenty-five city council assignments. So we had started talking about this, and as I mentioned in our work meeting, city council assignments are something that helps out the city because there are so many meetings to attend, and it would be impossible for any one person to do that. And last time, at the beginning of the year, we actually already put Bryce Wilcox as mayor of Ten. So we can have that, that was listed on here. And last time, we had talked about having Cindy Cox continue with mosquito abatement, and I think everyone was fine with that, any stuff, okay? Yes, and we appreciate Cindy, you doing that. And so some of the things that we needed, we require district, we have that with Ryan, senior citizen liaison. You have been the senior citizen. I didn't know if, I think, if there, did you want to continue doing the seniors?
He might be too busy.
Do you want to do it, Lisa? Okay. Okay, so we'll have Lisa do the seniors. Um, okay, some other things we had, we already had talked about Debbie doing the sheriff. And then she's also going to find out a little more about the bits, the healthy communities. Debbie, did you want to continue to do that?
Yes, that will be fine.
Okay. Okay. We haven't, let's see, and then we have the parks, trails, and recreation. I, I don't know who, I think Debbie, before you were doing the parks and trails, but is there someone else that would like to?
I think Bryce wanted to, didn't you want to do it, Bryce, or?
Sure, yeah. Um, I would try to expand that a little bit, the parks, trails, you know, city-owned property. You know, because there's other properties besides parks and trails that he, um.
So a lot of that actually falls under administrative, I, I think that'll be something that we will be discussing. Some already have contracts, so what you're talking about, the, the, you said only, already have contracts, or what were you?
Well, not necessarily, well.
Because, because as far as the parks and trails, from what I see, and Cindy would know this really well. So with the Wasatch Front Regional Council, and I think Debbie, I think you've attended these as well, but they have meetings that they, we go to quite often where they get out big charts, and they have you go through, and it is part of the planning process. So I think when it, that's what was my thinking, when in the past when we've had someone deal with parks and trails, they actually were on that committee and they would attend those meetings. Like, I think Debbie did it on Zoom, and I went in person, Weaver State had one in January that we went to. Usually, I don't know if they were quarterly a couple of times a year, I'm trying to think how many times I've gone to those meetings. And generally, those are held through Wasatch Front Regional Council.
Well, to bring it back to my thought, so there are, you know, the properties, I'm looking at these assignments as something that could be reported back to the city council regularly. So the reason I added city-owned property on that is because there are reports that maybe the city would like to know about. Whether it's land that's being leased, maybe there is an issue with some land that's being leased along the slough. Or something, you know, we've had some times when people have kind of approached on that, and it's not even there. So I think if we had a council member over the city-owned properties, then we could have a report that we, you know, we could have a report that would come back to the city council.
So then you.
That was my thought.
So then you'd want that city council member to go meet with city staff and have city staff tell them if there's issues?
Or the, or the city staff would come to them. The city staff would come to the member of the council if there's a problem.
So that, that's kind of similar to what Jared used to do years ago, he'd come once a month or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, should we have Jared, if you would like someone to come and start reporting that? Which we want, and it would have to be him, I'm just saying that's kind of how he used to do it.
Kind of an example, I'm just saying a member of the city council that would come back and report. And whether you want, if, you want to have Bryce listed under that, if Bryce want to have Jared come and give a report on that, then there's a member of the council that's, uh, has that responsibility.
Or at least get the information from him and share it with him.
Sure. Sure.
Well, I could, I could, you know, city-owned property, roads, parks, everything. Everything in the public works directly.
So you want it parks, trails, recreation, and city-owned property?
Right.
Okay. Somewhere. Well, I see we're doing new budget. We're going to do budget and financials. Okay?
Did we need to identify or define that role? I don't know. Talk about it, but are we identifying that role?
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Name, name yourself.
So I was budget and finance oversight.
Okay.
And then obsequiating and there's, you find your roles back. Could I ask a question on that? We also had a part that was sales tax oversight, which Lisa was assigned to you. What, what is that? I mean, what, what oversight is that?
So the reason why I added that-
The sales tax is my, it's the same.
I mean, is that, can we lump that in with Ryan to be budget, finance, and sales tax oversight? Is that a practical thing?
So are we confusing some of these, though, with responsibilities that we already have? Like our city treasurer, who we pay, does the sales tax oversight?
Yeah, because every time I would check on it, I'd say, it's already done.
So-
So-
Because at the one meeting, if you remember, we had talked about, do you want a copy of, like, the ledgers every month? So, I mean, as far as sales tax oversight, I think that's something that probably the treasurer-
See, so that would be something, though, that if a city, a member of the city council was involved with, let, let Ryan decide. You know, is this something that he'd want to report to the council? Or is it something that, that we wouldn't need? As is, we really don't know.
Well, other than we get monthly financials.
There was just an already internal report. It did come up at the toilet or something like that, but we don't always have time. We just have listings.
No. No, we don't always even talk about our financials, which I think that that should be part of our monthly meetings. That I think we need to go over our budget every single monthly shift.
We need to.
So.
We need to.
Okay. Okay. So what else? Did we have youth council? We already said animal control. Dell, you said you wanted animal control, emergency. Did you say that?
Yeah. That I would be willing to do that.
Okay.
With the month of new.
Emergency preparedness. We already had that with Bryce.
On the animal control, I think they join the sheriff's huddle in Friday's meetings. And that's when they talk about, yeah, and that's when they talk about their show. And I think it's like ten fifteen or whatever. I'm surprised.
I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're always on Friday or, but I'll point that-
Yeah, it's like now, because that's when they would do their report on stuff.
So then also we had listed, there are four, mainly four volunteer committees that they are leading monthly. And so there was community events, economic development, beautification committee, a community arts council. So I don't know if any of you would like to pick one of these committees that you could come and be a part of.
Let's see, Lisa, did we have you under community events? A council member over that?
Yes. I think last, Dell, I think last year we put everybody under the top.
With everybody in glory.
Because they all had a job to do.
Yeah. So, but whatever we talked about, we could just do one and then have them come back and report.
That's fine. That, that kind of goes along with the other two things I mentioned.
Is there somebody that would want to do economic development? That would want to come and be part of that committee? And they're going to start meeting and talking about our beautification, community arts council? We are required to have a community arts council when we write grants with the arts. So we do need to have somebody that is helping with our community arts.
What if, what if there's someone in the community that could, that we could appoint? And let them go, because, I mean, that's, that's a lot of extra stuff for, for us.
And, and they're, and these are, these are community ones. It's just, again, if somebody, because if somebody would be, yeah, could report back to the city council, just like the other teams.
So like even if you went to a meeting, you could get the notes from the meeting and report that if it were me.
Yeah. And if not, you know, like in-
I could do, well, I think the tomato jam falls under community arts.
Yeah.
And I was getting that anyway, so.
So do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Community arts council? I can do beautification, Sherry. Okay, thank you, Debbie. Okay. And then the only other one we have then is just the economic development. But Ryan, because you're the budget and finance oversight, do you want to come and help maybe with the economy?
Sure.
And I don't think it necessarily means that you need to come to every meeting. You know, they, they've been trying to meet once a month, but that doesn't mean that they- Okay?
So I had a question on the assignments that I had last year. And it's, you know, I had secondary water and culinary water, where I would attend those meetings and come back and report. Where our secondary system, as well as our drinking water, is in, has a separate entity. Isn't it important to have a member of the council still attend those meetings and come back and report?
You know, it probably is. And because, because the, being a stockholder, so Hooper City actually owns water shares. And there has to be somebody assigned as the, if we had a city manager, but we don't, that is actually my obligation. So as far as going to, for instance, like a, a secondary water, there would have to be, like, myself, or sometime if we have a city manager, that would actually go to those secondary water. That's probably why to the last, you know, when you were the mayor, that you went to those, because you were actually then the one that was over the, you were the, so when we received the letter from the stockholders' meeting, and then actually, I was the one that went to represent Hooper City at the stockholders' meeting, because technically, because we don't have a city manager, the mayor is listed as the CEO. And there's not necessarily in any time, there's correspondence that needs to belong with the Hooper irrigation. They either respond to us, or where I am the one that would be considered the stockholder for Hooper City, then if we, if we do assign anybody with secondary water, that, that would need to be me.
So does that follow the council organization and duties? I don't, I don't see that that follows what, what you just explained. I don't see that.
No, what, what it follows is if you go on and look at what the responsibilities of the mayor are, that's where it follows. It follows under responsibilities of the mayor. And I, I have printed all of those off ahead of time, because that is one that the mayor is responsible. The mayor is actually the chief executive officer. And like I said, because we do not have a city administrator, the mayor is actually the city administrator. And so, you know, I think it was maybe a little bit different when you were a director, because you actually were going to the directors' meetings, but now, and so-
I don't know if that, I think we're kind of getting off course with, off track with what our responsibilities are as a council.
Yeah. And so, and so it really, if you go into the mayors, and somewhere I printed them off and it's in one of my files. But anyway, that, that is one of the responsibilities of the mayor. So that one doesn't necessarily, and I did, I actually talked to Cole Allen and Wayne Haas about if you need to have a representative from the council come to the Hooper Water meetings. And they said they didn't feel like we did. If there was anything that needed to be done, then-
So why, why isn't this coming back to the council? You know, the council is actually the ones that, the council's the one that just forgets these responsibilities or assigns these responsibilities to, even, even to the mayor.
Yeah, well, I, actually, in, in most cities, the mayors just say to the city council, I would like you to have this assignment. I feel like, and Hooper, we've done, always done really good, that we've always said, what would you like to do? Because from speaking with other mayors, usually it's just the mayor that says, okay, I need you to do this assignment. And these, what, what this is, is the city council is representing the city, going to these additional meetings. So, and anybody at any given time, like both Cole and Wayne said, at any given time, they said someone only came twice last year, but if any time you wanted to go, anybody can go. At any time, anybody, well, not the irrigation, you have to actually be a stockholder. But like Hooper Water, anybody can go anytime. So if you would, if you would like to still do culinary water, that would be fine. As far as the secondary water, that actually needs to be the mayor, because I am the one that is listed as the stockholder with the irrigation. But would you like to still be going to the culinary water meetings? Yes?
My word, after all of that, I'd-
Okay, water, culinary, I'm putting you down.
I mean, I looked at that as an assignment, where you would come back and report, because there needs to be coordination-
Sure.
-between culinary water. It's not under the same rule.
Okay.
And I, I still kind of question that other part, but I'll-
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I, so I- I do think to no point, I think it's more of a council, it's not an assignment for you. We have-
Well, and we are, right? We're talking about-
Yeah, we are. And I think, because Dell, he's got animal control. I mean, everything I have has been, everything I have has been-
Traffic trailer. I think you should probably be logging that.
And you know what? And we, and yes, and we talked about that, that as far as taking the traffic, traffic trailer, no. As far as getting the reports, yes. If you would like to receive those reports. You had asked me to check with our insurance company, and I did. And they, they do not recommend having somebody besides staff that's on it. They said if in case of an emergency, like for example, if at Tomato Days, we said, Ryan, can you run to get this? That's okay, but on a regular basis. But yes, the reports, for sure. We'll have them sent to you.
Well, let me explain how I explained it before. How I envisioned this is that I will coordinate it where the traffic trailer would be. You know, I would come into the office, get a report from Stephanie, someone who said they're speeding past my house. And then when they speed, that report goes out, and then I would make a list of the time of day, how many miles per hour they were going over, and then provide that to the sheriff's department. That's how we're doing it.
Okay.
So what, what, I don't think anything changed, other than the, the mayor used to go hook on the trailer and take it to where it-
And that's the only thing we won't have you do, is to go on the trailer and take it. But so after, so Steph will still get a report-
Sure.
And then they will, our public works takes care of that. Once they get that back, we will be the one, yeah. So we have that. So traffic trailer report. Okay. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I think before we had storm and wastewater as an assignment, but there was really no reason to have, again, a city council person, because what, what do we do as a city council person over storm and wastewater? And, and again, the only other thing in this has become a, next word maybe, well, we should have even this one, but we didn't, as far as the house rental, and that's under Morgan. She's the one that does that, because she is the one on the contract that says she coordinates that with the company. And we have a few issues going with that and with that as we speak.
Okay, so that's, that's what I had down, too, is the house rental management company. So how do we get a report back to the council? I mean, we've never had a report back on what's really going on there. And at one time-
So, so we, we did talk about it at one of our work meetings, and I don't, I don't know, read it as appropriate to talk about it now, some of the issues.
I might want to do that in a, in a little more private-
That's what I think so, too. We have a few things that are going on.
So, so now that won't be in the council, that will be with city staff?
Well, Morgan is the one that coordinates that with the house rental management, because she is the one that is on that contract as far as coordinating. When there are issues, we have some issues, but like Reid mentioned, that would be better.
That's something I think you could easily talk to Morgan, to Morgan about anytime.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And get input and so forth. I just don't know, want to talk about that.
No, I, I don't see. Was there anything else then that we had? I think we had road enforcement, you know, and that was under city staff, newsletters. I think everybody has probably three things. I think maybe Bryce with the mayor pro temp and that was probably four things. Are you okay with that, Bryce? I think you had, you have four things with, with the mayor pro temp. Lisa, you have four things. Debbie has three. Ryan, you have four. The economic kind goes with budget. Dell, you have the three. Okay, I think we're good then. Okay. Did you get all that? If not, Morgan, I've written them down.
A little bit, yes.
Talk about it after. Okay, so do, do you want me, does everybody, were you all writing those down? Or-
Yeah, so what was my three? Because I just kind of lined up.
Okay, so animal control, still the culinary water, and then the traffic trailer report. And then Ryan has the fire district, the budget and finance oversight and economic development. Debbie has the sheriff, which went along with public safety, healthy communication, help, excuse me, communities and beautification. Lisa, youth council, community events, and Western Weaver CTC and the seniors. And then Bryce has emergency preparedness, and the community arts council, parks, trails, recreation, along with city-owned property, mayor pro temp. And then we are still going to have Cindy Cox do mosquito baiting. So, okay.
I can also make an update or chart-
Yes.
Since I'm about to, for everybody.
Okay. So we need to-
Get all my notes, I can always give it to Dell.
Yeah, and then we have to come back and we will done that. Okay, so is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve these assignments?
I'll make the motion to approve them.
Okay. So we had a motion made by council member Fowers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by council member North. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, on my favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the last thing we have on our agenda then is citizen comments. And this can be on anything that you have a concern that was not on the agenda. You're allowed three minutes, and if you'll come up and state your name.
I came up a couple city councils ago and brought a concern about citizen comment. It used to be at the beginning, now it's at the, or beginning and the end. Now it's at the end. Just talking mainly to the council here before the responses from the mayor. It was inaccurate. The citizen comment being the beginning's been on there for years, have been coming to these meetings for years. Before that, citizen comment at the end did not preclude you from speaking on agenda items. I feel like this really prevents citizens from talking about the current items, agenda items. And I don't know how you as a council can correct that, or if you can, but I'm just pleading that case again, that citizens don't have an opportunity to comment on the current issues. The other question I had, and this is just a question to anyone, I, it was my understanding you didn't have to say your address anymore, but on here, it says that you have to state your name and address. So if I could just get some clarification, do we still need to state our name and address? So.
Okay, thank you. So a couple clarifications on those. We talked about that last time, that if we allow citizen comments at the beginning, it made every meeting be a public hearing. And we, when we did this, in accordance to saying that the planning commission does, this wording is the same, and you do no longer, we were at a training this last summer, and they said for security reasons, that it is not proper to have people state their addresses. Not in Hooper that it would happen, but in other cities, there have been some retaliation. And so when people have stood up and have said their address, so they, it was by legal and advice that we were given, that we do no longer ask people to state their addresses. So that's clarification on that.
It could be helpful, maybe, is if they're in the city or outside the city. Yeah. If you've got people coming in from Roy, you know, pay some attention.
Okay.
Shay Hall, Hooper citizen. I just want to address what the last citizen had spoke. One of the very first meetings I started attending was Del Fowers, who was the mayor. And it did indeed say at the very bottom that you could only speak at the end of the meeting if it was something not on the agenda, because I turned to Travis Bates behind me, and I didn't know that Travis Bates, and I said, I have something to say, but it's not, but it was on the agenda, what should I do? And he said, just stand up and say it. Because we were the only two. We were the only two in the room. So I just want to say that, because this citizen has said something that, I was at the meeting, that was different. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else that has a comment they would like to make? Okay?
Jason Horstbull. I just want to give you a little history of myself. We moved to Hooper when I was four years old, so nineteen seventy-eight, to date myself, right? Born and raised here, had a magical childhood, riding bikes through the town, going down to the old ranch house, I think it was Fowers Market or something at the time, right? Getting a little Swedish fish and my little slurpee and that. So had a magical childhood. For a little stint, moved to Roy City, raised some kids, came back, I love it. I appreciate all of your guys' willingness to serve the city. The only thing, as I'm kind of observing what's happening, I just want to state this, and this might be the controversial part of the night for me, is I voted for Mayor Bingham. I didn't vote for any of the other ones to be mayor, okay? I voted for Mayor Bingham because I trust her as the CEO of the city of Hooper. So I trust her direction. I would counsel you all, because that is what your definition is, as a council member, to counsel with the CEO, to listen to what she's saying. Just as observing tonight, I thought she offered some, some pretty good wisdom on putting the cart before the horse, and none of it was even accepted, it was just bulldozed over. So as a citizen, I appreciate Sherry, I trust her to lead the city. I did vote for a council member, but anyway, I just, I appreciate you guys, what you're doing. I just, I want to see the city do good things. I know it's not an easy decision with a lot of the things that you have to, you know what I mean? It's, a decision is either good or bad, right? It's going to hurt somebody's feelings, I get that, but I trust Mayor Bingham, and just counsel you guys to listen to her. So, thank you.
Okay. Sir, anybody else that has a comment?
I got the American flag on my screen and the Trump flag flying behind it on fifty-nine hundred. I contacted each one of you. I appreciate those last comments. And say, hear, hear, amen to that. I would like to know why the only one of you five that had the decency of responding to me was Ryan Hill on matter. I emailed you and then all five of you with the mayor, and I thought, oh, you probably can't respond, because it's a quorum outside of the group. So I text each one of you, and Bryce, you didn't even respond, and you're in my district. Is there a reason why?
Sure, I can talk to you after.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But as councilmen and women and members of this group, you report to the citizens of Hooper, and none of you have the decency to even respond, say, I'm Ryan Hill. I look at the income that we do not have in Hooper, because there's rarely, not very many businesses that are bringing in any tax revenue. And I think that the, this recent change that was pushed and bulldozed through was because of the Smiths issue that's coming up. If there's no tax money coming from businesses, where's it coming from? There's going to be taxation without representation. So look back to the Boston Tea Party and see how that looked out. You can't just tax it out of the, out of the citizens of Hooper. So we're going to turn into Hooper HOA, long stew long, a hundred and fifty bucks, next time it's three hundred, then court. How are we going to get funds? Because pretty soon we're going to be unincorporated Weaver County, because we're going to run out of funds. And if we say, well, we got a couple million in there, well, Jared says there's about thirteen million projects that need to be fixed, we just wait for the next collapse of a pipe in the street before we decide to deal with it. So what are you doing as a council to fix it before it happens? Because where I sit, not much. If any of these citizens watching or sitting behind me who look at any past meetings, Dell, your vitriol is outstanding. In the last meeting, Sherry could have said, I make a motion, my name's Sherry, and you would have said, no. You said to table something that was already in motion, it just needed to be put on the agenda. At what point are you going to swallow your pride and quit dragging the immature hostility of your family drama into the entire city? It's ridiculous.
Are you going to continue?
Yes, I am. I think that if you look at Dr. and Governance one twenty-one, and the presumed authority you think you have, it would suit you well.
We don't clap. We don't clap. We don't do that. We keep ordering our meetings. Is there anyone else that has a public comment?
Can I just say that? Yeah. So there, if you look at your property tax notice that we all hate to get every November, there's several, several entities that collect their revenue by what we call truth and taxation, including the Weaver County Fire Board, which I sit on. And I think the worst one is the Weaver County School District that collects revenue based on what they pretty much demand. You know, they, they pretty much say, we need this much money, we need to build schools, we need to do this. Fire District does the same thing, the county commission does the same thing, and we have the process called truth and taxation. Fortunately, over the last twenty-five years, as a city, we haven't had to go down that route with truth, truth and taxation. That's one of the things on the table. Commercial development is another item. But yes, I mean, I think we all agree that we need some type of revenue stream, but to say that we don't care, that we don't look at it, I think is irresponsible, especially because everyone of us cares about it. You know, we're looking, looking at ways to do it. So truth and taxation is a real thing, and that's one of the options we're exploring as well.
I'm going to make a comment, too, to Sherry, is that I did not respond directly to you, but I did ask Ryan, did you receive this? What, remind me what was discussed before? And he told me that he's already answered you, so I didn't know that he needed to hear from me as well. Okay, is there any other comments? Okay, seeing no other comments then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Allen, favor?
Aye.
Hi, meeting is adjourned.